We will call our meeting to order tonight. Renata, roll call please.
Evans.
Here.
McEvers.
Here.
Gookin.
Here.
Adams.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Edinger.
Here.
Rise for the invocation tonight by Pastor Robert Sunquist of Christ the King Church.
Thanks for having me back. We're glad that you guys are doing good work. Let us pray. Lord God, we pray for our city council and all those who are in authority. We thank you especially for this city council and for the form of government given us in your, in our beloved country. Lord, give our churches the grace along with our fellow citizens to value the officers and magistrates of our government as those sent by you. Instill in us the respect and honor that is due them. Lord, endow them with wisdom for their several duties, with a spirit of sacrifice for the common welfare, with mercy and justice, with uprightness and kindliness. Correct the evils of selfishness, greed, and a vain desire for honor or abuse of power among us, as well as in other governments of the world. And grant that the true purposes of government may prevail, safeguarding peace and prosperity, so that we may live soberly and uprightly in your sight and have opportunity to tell of you and your kingdom. These petitions we direct to you because we know that in Jesus they are heard. In his name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amendments to the agenda. Do we have any amendments to the agenda? None seen. We will move on to presentations. First presentation was, we have the Idaho Stars Project presented by Beth Oppenheimer, Director of the Idaho Association for the Education of Young Children. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm just going to get this presentation set up real quick if that's okay.
Okay, great.
There we go. Thank you. Okay, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Beth Oppenheimer and I am the Executive Director for the Idaho Association for the Education of Young Children. And I'm here tonight to talk to you about healthy kids and healthy futures and how we can incorporate some healthy initiatives into our childcare licensing. I want to start by asking all of us to challenge ourselves and especially those of us who are community leaders and ask yourselves as community leaders what we can do to improve the health of childcare environments here in the city of Coeur d'Alene. Want to talk really briefly about what childcare looks like here in Idaho. A lot of you probably know that in Idaho we do have state licensing that unfortunately ranks pretty low with the standards in the country. Fortunately, we have eight cities in Coeur d'Alene including that have chosen to have their own childcare licensing. And I would like to applaud the city of Coeur d'Alene for the strength in childcare licensing standards that you have. They are literally one of the top licensing standards that we have here in the state of Idaho, so I want to applaud you for that. Want to talk a little bit about the role of childcare for healthy children and some basics about childhood obesity. I want to quickly go through this map that was put together by the CDC to show the problem that we have with obesity among our children and adults. There are three slides that I'm going to show that follow the obesity patterns of adults beginning in 1990. As you'll see here, beginning in 1990, the, between 10 and 14 percent of adults were considered overweight or obese here in Idaho. Moving on to 2000, you'll see that that number dramatically increases and between 15 and 19 percent of our adults in Idaho are considered overweight and obese. And then moving on to 2010, you'll see that that number continues to increase, 25 to 29 percent of our adults in Idaho are considered overweight or obese. And then when we talk about the children here in Idaho, we know that children between the ages of two and 19, one in three are considered overweight or obese. Some statistics about Idaho specifically, children between the ages of two and four, 25 percent are overweight or obese. By the time they get to third grade, that number increases to 30. In high school students, you'll see that that number is 23. The reason that number is 23 percent is because those were self-reported, but we know talking to pediatricians and doctors that when they actually weigh and measure our high school students, that number tends to be closer to 30 percent. And then you'll see moving on into adults that that number increases dramatically to 63 percent of our adults are overweight or obese here in Idaho. There are a lot of educational consequences and consequences for obesity and we know that children who are overweight or obese can be undernourished at the same time. And what that means is that our children might not be getting the proper nutrients to have a healthy life. Also, physical activity. We want to point out that children who are not active have more behavioral problems and disciplinary problems. They can oftentimes have shorter attention span in class and it really inhibits their learning. Screen time, the same thing. There's been a lot of research around screen time and we know with the prevalence of technology that screen time really inhibits our children's brain ability and their brain development. And it also interferes with exploration and being creative and their learning pattern. Obviously, there's lots of other health consequences with being overweight or obese that can come, heart disease, type 2 diabetes, et cetera. So that was kind of a lot of doom and gloom, but the good news is, is that there are things that we can do and we really believe that childcare could make a difference. Childcare plays an incredible role in our communities and we know that in the state of Idaho, that close to 60 percent of our children are in some type of childcare setting while their parents work and go to school. We want, lots of families are working, lots of single families rely on childcare in order for them to go to, go to worker's school. Childcare can play, can provide a healthy environment for children to eat, play, and grow. And we know that children who eat nutritious food during every meal can stay active and continue to have energy to learn. Activity promotes brain development. One little statistic that, that you might not know is that a brain develops 90 percent by the time a child is five years old. So we want to ensure that by the time the five, the child is five years old, that we are teaching healthy habits as they grow older. We want to help children build healthy habits for life and we know that the food preferences and physical activity habits that they develop at a very young age can oftentimes continue throughout their life. Childcare providers play an incredible role in a child's life and they act as role models for children. So if we are showing that our providers are having healthy habits during the day with our children, we can expect that our children can also develop those healthy habits. Also, childcare providers are in a unique position in that their engagement with the families. A high-quality early learning program such as childcare means that you also have a high level of family engagement. Providers depend on families and families depend on providers for that engagement and that communication. And providers can also help work with parents to, so that parents can have, develop healthy habits at home. Some resources to tackle some of these issues. Of course, Idaho AYC through our Idaho Stars Project, we offer a lot of professional development opportunities and trainings for childcare providers to get the tools and resources they need to ensure that the children in their care are developing healthy habits. Also, our accredited programs, there are a couple here in Coeur d'Alene and our National Association for Family Childcare accredited programs too. Those are really the highest standards of childcare and we know that they are following some of these healthy initiatives as well. The Idaho Child and Adult Care Food Program, they offer lots of resources for childcare providers and for families. And Let's Move Childcare, and I believe that the city of Coeur d'Alene is a Let's Move City. I believe that I did read that. So Let's Move Childcare is a component of Let's Move and it was developed to provide tools and resources for childcare providers. There's tons of training, tons of examples, tons, tons of examples that childcare providers can use to ensure that they are providing a healthy environment for the children in their care. Excuse me. They focus on five key areas: physical activity, screen time, food and healthy nutritious meals, beverages, and infant feeding. So I want to talk a little bit about some suggested childcare policies that you might want to explore and have the opportunity to embed in your current childcare licensing standards. I will say that the city of Boise recently took on this initiative and over the past few years, Idaho AYC has been working with the city of Boise to figure out how to incorporate these healthy initiatives into childcare licensing. And it started about two years ago with Idaho AYC and we developed, through the Let's Move Childcare, we developed some workshops and we offered those to providers just to get a feel from providers as to what their needs were and how, what, what their take on it was. It ended up that we offered the, the workshops at the very beginning and we were hoping to get 35 providers to attend. It ended up that that filled up within an hour and we had about 70 providers on our waiting list that were really hoping to do it. And I know that the city of Coeur d'Alene, through the Health Districts, are also offering the Let's Move Childcare workshops here. We did a lot of major stakeholder outreach. We talked to doctors and pediatricians, insurance providers, just to get their take on what it would look like if we incorporated healthy initiatives into childcare licensing. We met with the mayor and each city council member to talk to them about what their ideas were. And the most important thing that we did is we reached out to childcare providers because we wanted to make sure that whatever we were looking at, that childcare providers had the tools and resources they needed to be successful in order to follow these policies. We surveyed all of the childcare providers in Boise and we also did about 30 face-to-face interviews with them. And then we crafted a policy to receive input. We continued to get lots of input through open houses, work sessions, and public hearings. And after close to about two years, working through some kinks and really incorporating the feedback that we got from our stakeholders and childcare providers, we were able to come up with, with a policy that actually passed last month. Want to talk about what those health initiatives are and what that policy looks like. There are four components of it. The first component includes daily physical activity. And what that is, is that we expect that childcare providers incorporate physical activity into their daily routine. When we say that, we don't mean to add something new. It's what are those daily activities that they're already doing that they can turn into a physical activity moment? Such as if the childcare provider happens to be reading a book, have the, have the children stand up and act out the story, things like this. When we say physical activity, it doesn't mean having the children run around laps or things like that. It's more about how we can continue with our daily activities and just include a little bit more physical activity. The second component is screen time. And this is where we got a lot of feedback from childcare providers, especially our home providers, who do rely sometimes on screen time or television while they're preparing meals. The national recommendation is no screen time in childcare, but we were able to come to a compromise with our childcare providers and, and we limit it to one hour a day, not to exceed five hours a week. Again, the national standard is to ensure that children are not watching TV at all during the day in childcare. The third component is nutrition standards and meals for snacks. And what we came, what we came up with is that childcare providers who are offering and serving meals and snacks would follow the USDA Child and Adult Care Food Program Dietary Guidelines. And it would not apply to, to those childcare providers where the families bring in the food. It would only be for those childcare providers who are serving meals and snacks. And of course, we would make allowances for children with allergies or special dietary needs. And then the fourth component is infant feeding. We know that mothers who can and choose to, to breastfeed their children get the best nutrients that they can at that very young age. So we want to make sure that our childcare providers are having a dedicated, clean space within their program that mothers can continue to breastfeed if they choose to do so. And this can be any existing space within, within their program, but we would request that it not be a bathroom. Implementation and enforcement. There are a lot of discussions and there are a lot of ideas of how we can do this. We want to take about a year to roll this policy out and one of the reasons for the year rollout is that for the Let's Move Childcare workshops, we want to make sure that all of the directors take a four-hour Let's Move Childcare workshop because one of the most important things that we want to do is see that childcare providers are successful. We would hate to roll out a policy and say, you know, good luck. We want to make sure that they're successful and have the tools and resources that they need. The review of policies upon annual city inspection. So when the city inspectors go out, we also got a lot of feedback from the city inspectors because we wanted to make sure that we didn't add a lot of extra work on their plate. So we came up with some pretty simple ideas and solutions. So when the city inspector would go out, they would look at a weekly menu to make sure that, that the provider is serving the healthy and following the guidelines. The physical activity can be something as simple as looking at the daily or the weekly schedule to ensure that there are some times within that, their schedules, that they are including physical activity. For the, the infant feeding, just making sure that they have that space. And then the screen time, it can be as simple as if the childcare provider incorporates in their handbook, their family handbook and policy that says, "We at this center or this program limit our screen time to an hour a day." And then one thing that, that the city of Boise is doing and I have seen other states do is that they have those compliances listed on the city website, similar to what you see in restaurant compliance. So you often see a restaurant who's following what. And so they're going to incorporate that into the, onto the website. So again, I ask you all as community leaders to think about what we can do to improve the health of childcare environments here in the city of Coeur d'Alene. And thank you again. My name is Beth Oppenheimer and I just also want to say that Idaho AYC is committed to help cities throughout Idaho that want to explore this opportunity and these options. Having gone through this for the last two years, I feel like we've really worked out some bumps and bruises. And so now we're able to work with cities and we also recognize that every community is different. And so this can look different in, in different communities throughout, throughout Idaho. So thank you again and I stand for questions.
Thank you, Beth. Questions? Woody.
Beth, um, have this, have you taken this to our childcare commission?
Mr. Mayor. Thank you. You know, I did talk with Barbie Harrison. I have talked with her a little bit about this and my plan was to actually meet with them first, but because I was in Moscow last night and the timing of everything, it just so happened that I could schedule time with you all first. But I, but I do plan to meet further with Barbie and, and the committee.
Yeah, I think a lot of times we take hard guidance from them. They come and say, "Hey, Beth did a great job. We want to implement it." And then they, they do all the work for us, so we just go. We just do a lot of nodding.
Sure.
So I look forward to you meeting with them and getting their feedback on that.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Beth? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to a citizen award presented by Battalion Chief Jeff Canfield.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jeff Canfield, Coeur d'Alene Fire Department. We'll wait for these guys. We're here this evening to present a award to a heroic young lady. Every day we respond on numerous emergencies and generally when we get there, people are not having their best day. And oftentimes, the stress of what's going on, you know, clouds their judgment and maybe they're not thinking too clearly. However, on recent call we went on, we found quite the opposite. We found a wonderful family and a heroic young girl here. And I will let firefighter Eric Looney and our special guests Sequoia and Arabelle Love take it from there.
Can you hear me here? Is this okay?
You know, we might have you come behind the podium so we can see you.
So today we'd like to award Sequoia Love with the Award of Exemplary Action. And I'll read this to you. I was lucky enough to be on this call. "And on September 2nd, 2014, Sequoia Love and her mother found her three-year-old sister floating unconscious and not breathing in a swimming pool. Sequoia's mother pulled the girl from the water and the 11-year-old began lifesaving chest compressions. After a very short period of time, Sequoia's sister began coughing up water and breathing again. In this stressful and chaotic moment, Sequoia had the knowledge and presence of mind to act, as without a doubt, Sequoia's actions saved her sister's life. Therefore, in recognition of her outstanding heroic actions, this certificate is presented to her on behalf of the citizens of Coeur d'Alene, the city of Coeur d'Alene, and the Coeur d'Alene Fire Department on this day, the 21st day of October 2014. So we'd like to award this to her. She is a lifesaver."
Congratulations. Very cool. You know what? Probably catch up after a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the public comment portion of our agenda tonight. Each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes to address the council on matters that pertain to city government. Do we have anyone tonight that would wish to address the council? Come on up.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is John Topero. I'm a citizen of the city of Coeur d'Alene. It is no surprise that the hot topic right now, not just in Coeur d'Alene but in the nation, is the lawsuit that the owners of the Hitching Post filed against our city. I am here today to voice my support for Don and Lynn Knapp because this ordinance is clearly a violation of Idaho State Constitution, specifically Article 1, Section 4, the guarantee of religious liberty. Now, I'll be frank. Although you were warned by the public and local clergy back in 2013 that problems like this would occur, it's clear that you did not anticipate the massive reaction and outrage at the national and even international level. And now you're in damage control, quickly crafting a response saying, "Hey, we're only kidding. The city never threatened the Knapps with fines or prosecution. Besides, they just filed for a change in their status to a religious organization, so we're not coming after them. It's all good." The problem is, it is not all good. According to the Knapps attorney, they did not file for a change in status and the city is on record in making these threats. Here is the problem. By passing this unpopular and illegal ordinance, you forced all Christians to violate their own foundational beliefs in order to avoid fines and even possibly jail. That causes emotional distress. And that is cruel. Whether you have realized it at the time or not, you have legislated cruelty. And that is nothing more than bigotry. This is an ordinance that promotes bigotry against Christians. As far as I can tell, it's the only time in our nation's history that an ordained pastor has faced official government bigotry for his beliefs. You cleaned up the city's image by kicking out the Arians and their bigotry. Now there is sanctioned bigotry by the city government? Should we put up billboards warning people, businesses, and conventions to stay away because bigotry is still alive here? Way to go, Coeur d'Alene. Now that you see firsthand the damage that this has caused, the time is now to repeal this ordinance and restore the city's image. Thank you.
Other public comments, please.
Hang on, Mr. Mayor, if I can. Mr. Gridley, could you address some of what John has said? Thank you.
I'd be glad to. There's a lot of misinformation floating around. The city of Coeur d'Alene has never threatened the Knapps. So let me say that again. The city of Coeur d'Alene has never threatened the Knapps. We've talked to them, had a cordial conversation with them about what our ordinance says and how if they're operating and providing civil services, not religious services, but civil services, and they discriminate based on sexual orientation, that they could be in violation of that ordinance, could be in violation. As with any potential violation of any of our ordinances, it's something that is a complaint made, it's investigated, it's evaluated according to the facts and law, and then, if appropriate, a prosecution is engaged. Many cases, and we haven't had any complaints related to this ordinance, the discrimination ordinance, there have been no complaints brought to us. We have not attempted to arrest, prosecute, harass, anything with the Hitching Post. Like I said, we've had cordial conversations as we do with other citizens when they have questions about what our ordinances say and what our laws are. The lawsuit came as a surprise. In the, on the face of the ordinance that council adopted, it provides exemptions for, in essence, churches, religious corporations, schools, and other entities like that, that it's not our business to get into their beliefs. And so I just want to say that I think there is a lot of misinformation that we're out prosecuting ministers, that we're going to harass churches, we're going in churches. That's totally false. That is totally false. And unfortunately, that has been widely spread. So anything I can do to answer questions, provide information, but I want to be real clear with council, and I think you understand, but with the public as well, that that is not what we have done in the past, that's not what we do, plan on doing in the future.
Questions for Mike? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
We'll continue on with the public comment. Sir, you can come on up.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, same topic.
Your name, please, sir.
Oh, Vern Westgate, citizen of Coeur d'Alene, resident of Coeur d'Alene. In 2013, when this was being considered, Woody and Dan and Steve and Ron were on the city council, the rest of you weren't. I read the 14th Amendment, Section 1, which says that any legal resident of the United States has the same rights as anybody else. LGBT folks have the same rights as I have. I have the same rights as they have. I pointed out that if they pass this ordinance, what we were going to end up with was what we have, some kind of a ruckus, more than some kind of a ruckus, probably national notoriety, we've gotten that. So what we have now is a senator round the Hitching Post, but what we have is an animated discussion that shouldn't be in place. I pointed out to the city council that I didn't understand why they felt that it was right for them to pass a law that the founding fathers hadn't chosen to pass and it was part of the state legislature's activities at the time, part of the national conversation, if you will, going on now. Why does city, why does city Coeur d'Alene think we ought to get in the middle of this? Why don't... Coeur d'Alene think we ought to get in the middle of this? Why don't we let our attorneys, our city attorneys, do their job? I pointed out that if anybody in that LGBT community was discriminated unfairly in any manner, that didn't, you know, attack other people's rights, then they could take care of that. That's their job. That's all I had to say. Oh, one thing. Since Steve voted against it, he can't bring it up again. I would, I wish that Ron or Dan, Dan, you and I agreed on that constitutional business. Dan made the mistake of showing up on my doorstep before the last election, so he's heard this before. Or Woody. I wish one of you would just say, let's rescind this ordinance and let the state and the federal government work it out, and then go with whatever comes from that. But let's don't attack the churches, let's don't attack the LGBT community, let's put the two together. Our church, I'm a elder at Canlight Community Fellowship, we wish the gays and lesbians would come to our church. We dearly love to have them there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say that I did talk to Vern about this, and I do agree that this issue would be best solved at a higher level. I was interviewed today by Fox TV, and Dan Springer came to town. And you can see it on the TV or on the internet. And it was a, I don't know, 15-minute interview, but only a little, little bit ends up on the TV. And I did say that one of the things I would like to see, I said, why are you coming to Coeur d'Alene, Idaho to talk to a city council about what is a national issue? I said, I would like to see leadership from the national government and from our State House on this, because you have an issue here where you have rights that grind against each other. And it's a topic that I brought up with our attorneys when we first talked about the anti-discrimination ordinance, and that rights do constantly grind against each other. We see it all the time up here with personal property rights. And, you know, I mean, we just had one a couple of weeks ago. So there's always going to be this kind of conflict. It's much better if it's decided at a higher level. I hope it is. I hope they address it. Until they didn't, because they didn't, we did here, because we can do that. There was nothing, and I asked this question of the attorneys, prohibiting us from addressing that issue. It was going on around the state. It was legal. We couldn't do that. It is complaint-driven. We aren't out actively pursuing and knocking on doors and checking under rocks. I spoke to Tony Stewart today, and his thoughts on it are that, you know, what happens in the church is the church's business. If the church decides that they want to do whatever, they can do that. But once you leave the church, you're in the community. And that's where our ordinance has effect out there. But I do agree with you. This is a constitutional issue, and I would hope that our national government addresses it.
Any other public comment tonight? Come on, come on up, please.
I have photographs, too.
State your name, please.
My name is Linda Meyer. And mayor, city council members, my name is Linda Meyer, and I reside on the top of Fernand Hill in the city of Coeur d'Alene among the stately ponderosa pines. My husband and I moved to Fernand Hill because of the natural pristine beauty and habitat. I'm here today so that you can take the appropriate action, where in the future, present landowners and new developers within the hillside ordinance will be required to leave a minimum of 15% natural habitat in areas larger than one acre. In the last months, clear cutting has occurred on top of Fernand Hill, removing numerous majestic ponderosa pines. This is due to a number of view easements drawn up years ago before development occurred. Additionally, a new development along Frosty Pine Trail resulted in the cutting down of over 150 ponderosas ranging 60 to 80 feet tall. The developer had the trees pulled out by the roots so that Frosty Pine Trail could be widened to City of Coeur d'Alene standards. The residents who are clear-cutting for their view are not taking into consideration the major negative impact of their actions on the local flora and fauna. There's already a loss of habitat for wildlife species from their actions. Ponderosa pines provide food and shelter for a wide variety of birds. Ponderosas make good roosts for wild turkey, selling purchase for western bluebird, nest and hunting platforms for red-tailed hawks, osprey or bald eagles, and various other raptors. My husband and I had close to 60 trees clear-cut from an acre of our property with trunks measuring up to 21 inches in diameter. We had a storm shortly thereafter where the trees were removed, and we lost three large trees due to, that were close to the easements due to wind and instability. A study from the University of Oregon found that in certain zones, areas that were clear-cut, had three times the amount of erosion. These irresponsible choices contribute to the overall desecration of Fernand Lake, which already has toxic green algae problems. The lake used to be a great site for recreation and wildlife. The ecologist, Dr. Frank Wilhelm of the University of Idaho, who has been given a grant to test the water in Fernand Lake biweekly, says the lake is so toxic that if a dog goes in the water and licks its fur, it will die from liver failure two days later. I'm also worried about noxious weeds becoming established on my property. Millions of dollars are spent in the state trying to prevent noxious weeds from taking over. During the time the trees were being cut down, I contacted the city of Coeur d'Alene Planning Department, parks, and the city attorney to no avail. I believe that the city of Coeur d'Alene's hillside ordinance requires new developers to obtain the city's permission to cut down trees over six inches in diameter on slopes greater than 15%. This ordinance does not apply to residents with view easements or a number of adjacent view easements, creating more than a 15% grade. I learned that the developers in Coeur d'Alene that have to leave a minimum of 15% natural habitat and cannot clear-cut. We need to be responsible and have better land management so we can enjoy our God-given environment and natural resources. Therefore, I'm requesting that you consider an amendment to the hillside ordinance requiring present landowners leave a minimum of 15% natural habitat in areas larger than one acre. Thank you.
Questions? Troy, just a, just a quick question is that we, I was going to ask just, Troy, are you knowledgeable of this project and what went on here?
I am not.
Okay. So we need to take it back for more study, just to see exactly what went on. And we will do that. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make public comment tonight? Okay, we will move on to the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of Resolution 14045, which includes S. 405, Acceptance of Public Improvements for Belarive, 5th Edition, S. 312, Approval Final Plan, Acceptance of Public Improvements, and Approval of Security for Coeur d'Alene, 23rd Edition, Approval Lease Agreement Extensions with Commercial Property Management at 816 Sherman Avenue, Memorandum of Understanding with Dalton Gardens for Reading Our Water Meters on Government Way Between Dalton and Hanley, Greenwood, Kootenay County for Funding the City Link Transit System, and Master Agreement with Kootenay County Emergency Medical Services System, and as recommended by General Services Contract with Welsh Comer for Surveying of the BSFN property on the river.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. Steve?
Mr. Mayor, I'd ask for removal of Item E for a separate vote, please, on the funding for City Link.
Okay, Woody then, would you?
Good with that?
Good with that?
Yes.
Good second. Okay. So we are going to vote on the consent calendar with removing Item E, which we're going to vote on separately. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Miller?
Yes.
Edinger?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. So then we have pulled out for discussion the agreement with Kootenay County for Funding of City Link Transit System.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for, I don't even know how to word that. So it's a new one. Generally, if it's on the agenda, then somebody would move to approve it, so.
I'll move to approve funding for, with Kootenay County for the City Link Transit System.
I'll second it.
Okay, so a motion and a second, then discussion on that. There we go.
Yeah, it was going backwards.
So any further discussion on that?
Mr. Mayor, just in case anybody was wondering, I've historically voted against this. I have some objections to the whole premise of public transit as it relates to carting people around. I don't have any objections to infrastructure, but when it has wheels, then I have objections to that. And I just think that with the federal funding, should that go away, you know, is this sustainable? So just a couple of points on that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, so we're not a roll call on that one item. So we'll have a roll call on the, on Item E, Agreement with Kootenay County for Funding of the City Link Transit System.
Miller?
Yes.
Edinger?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
No.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Announcements, city council announcements. Kiki?
I have one. As I've mentioned before, I've been working with a group of citizens in the closure of the McEwan projects, which there are multiple, and we've been meeting recently. So I just wanted to update council and our viewers on that. After our meeting today with interim city administrator Troy Timison, we know that there are a few items that are unresolved. So we need a bit more time. There's some positive action. There's a couple of things that just need to be addressed, some final change orders and reconciliation. And so he's agreed to hold off a presentation that will be made to the city council once those things are completed.
Okay, thank you. Steve?
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to thank Kiki for her work on that. I know it's, you know, been pretty involved, and she's taken a lot of time out of her busy schedule to do that. And she probably has the most expertise as anyone else on the council. And as we spoke before, she's not an expert, but does have some expertise. And so was-
Experience.
Yeah, experience, expertise. And so just wanted to thank her for that.
Appreciate it. It's important, it's important, it's important work.
Thank you. Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sure that it's rare there's a day when someone in City Hall is sitting back in their chair wistfully saying, well, I remember the days when all we had to worry about was Gookin criticizing the LCDC. So-
I remember those days.
Yes, they were a while ago, and here we go again.
Is that what you're going to do now?
Yes.
Oh.
So I was at the LCDC's meeting that they had a workshop, and you were there, too, Wood. And they, they had a meeting. And I thought the people in Midtown did a great job presenting alternatives to LCDC as far as what they wanted to see instead of the current proposal. They were positive. They came up with alternatives. They did a great job with a presentation at an LCDC meeting. And then they had a workshop. And I was rather disappointed when I read the minutes of that workshop, which included, by my estimate, about 90 minutes of comments. And the public comments were not present in the minutes. And I thought that was kind of disrespectful to those people who really went out of their way to do a great job, to stay positive, to try to work with the organization. And then they were basically, my observation was shut out. And I found that kind of disappointing. We don't control LCDC on the council. We appoint members, the mayor appoints members, and we approve them. So we do have some sense of accountability in the case that everyone who was on the LCDC has been approved by council. But I think I would like to see, you know, I don't want to see people get disappointed because being an activist and having concerns and expressing them to the government is good. We have a right to do that, and I think we should continue to do that. So please don't give up. Please keep on trying. Tremendous efforts were made, and I don't want to see that go to waste. Also, last meeting, we learned that our cops grant failed, that we aren't going to get our three cops. I think this is important. I would like to believe that it's a priority for council. So what I would like to do now is make a motion to direct our police chief and our finance director to report to council at the next meeting on options for funding those three officers. And that is a motion.
Sam? Okay, so we have motion and a second. Further discussion on that?
Is there enough time between now and the next meeting to have that accomplished in finance world? I guess that would be directed to Troy?
Yes.
Cool.
Very good.
Woody?
So, Dan, so let me understand this. So this isn't going to happen unless we have a motion? Is that what I'm vibing off you here?
What I, what I understood from last time was that there would be funding options presented in January. And I would like to see that done on an accelerated level. I think we, the chief has shown me some statistics, and I think we would benefit from starting that process earlier.
So was that a yes or no?
I forget your question.
Okay.
What was the question, Wood?
Well, the question was, is this not already happening? Or does it, is it need to have a motion to make it happen?
I think I just would like to see it happen a little sooner than it was presented.
Okay.
If I may add, this is being worked on as we speak, Mayor and council members. We do not have a new source of revenue that I can see in your financial plan until January. So I've met with the chief a couple of times, and so the ideas have been boiling, and we've shared those with you through your strategic planning process as well. So January is a date only when I see additional income coming to the city that we had not counted on in the financial plan you approved.
But you can do a presentation next time. Thank you.
So the motion is that at the next council meeting to have a presentation of funding. Okay. Any further discussion on that? Renata, would you, we need roll call or just a voice vote?
You can just do a motion on that one.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anyone else have any of the council? Wood?
I've got a positive one. Hey, don't forget to spay and neuter.
You're talking, talking pets, right?
Keep those pets under control.
Okay.
Life will be good.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to the administrators' report. Troy?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On the screen, you see one happy retiring police officer. He is happier than we are because he is leaving this great organization after 27 years on the force. They call that process unpinning of his badge. This is none other than Police Officer Pat Sullivan. Last week, the party was great, and many agencies were there to wish him well in his retirement. He has such a fondness for his profession that he is going to help us out, even in retirement, as he's an expert on the range. So he's going to be a volunteer with the firearms training with the Coeur d'Alene Police Department. That is one happy individual and one loss for us in our police department and our city team. There's many great partners out here in this community, and none other than Kootenay Health. They stepped forward and made a donation to the city's reforestation program. $7,500 was a donation. They're doing a major expansion at their facility, and they wanted to go above and beyond as they remove some trees up there. They wanted to enhance our community. They made this donation. And you see here a picture of new trees going in. These are 30 selected large deciduous trees, meaning they lose their leaves, that are being planted in areas where these large deciduous trees can grow. So we thank Kootenay Health for that, along with those that put these great trees in the ground. What do you do when you have a great community? You take a picture. And we would like to see that picture in recognition of the National Community Planning Month in the month of October. So the city of Coeur d'Alene is sponsoring What Makes Places Great? Photo contest. That's going on for this entire month. Please send your pictures to the email address on the screen. Categories include environment, architecture, people, and community life. Winners will be named in early November in two categories: those that are younger than 18 years of age and those that are greater than 18 years of age. Winners in both categories will get a free lunch for two with Coeur d'Alene Mayor Steve Widmeyer. There'll also be a People's Choice Award for a gift card to the Vault Coffee on Sherman Avenue. And many great photos have come in, so please continue to send those forward. Please visit us for our planning open house on October 29, right here in the library community room. It's from 11:30 till 3:30. We are also have a new Coffee with the Mayor show on Channel 19. It focuses- till 3:30. We are also have a new Coffee with the Mayor show on Channel 19. It focuses on the development of the master plan for the project known as the Four Corners and Bureau of Land Management Corridor. Subject property stretches from Independence Point downtown west all the way out to Hunter, generally bordering along the Spokane River. Phil Boyd and Del Hatch with Welch Comer Engineers are developing the master plan. We are taking public input throughout this process and have had many great meetings. Check it out on Channel 19. Your library continues to be extremely busy. The month of October is no exception. There's offerings for all different ages. For information, call our library or go online at cda library dot org. We are moving into a season of maintenance, and technology is helping us. There you see a drone that is buzzing along the prairie standpipe. A standpipe holds water. This one happens to be about 160 feet tall, and it's said to be the largest standpipe in the world. Yes, the world. That is impressive. However, climbing around 160-foot-tall standpipe is difficult to do, and thanks to technology, we have now brought forward this piece of equipment to determine the condition of the outside of that structure. This will be used as we go forward to work with consultants on what work needs to be done next year. That is in your financial plan via the Water Department, so we thought we'd show you technology at work. Continuing touches on McEwen, six black granite tablets were installed at the McEwen Park last Thursday. They have been engraved with donors' names. For $500 donation, you can have your name, your family name, or your business name with the number of letters that it will accommodate. That is being sponsored by the Panhandle Parks Foundation. So, they are going in. Please come down and check 'em out. If you'd like to have your name or the name of a loved one on there, please see Debbie at the panhandle parks foundation dot com to purchase some space. Student representative, our parking commission has been in existence for over 12 years, and we would like to have a student rep. Council many years ago brought students into this public process. It's been a great success, and if anyone would like to volunteer that is a student, please contact us at City Hall, and we will get you into that committee. Winter, unfortunately for those of us that love summer, is just around the corner. It is time to winterize those irrigation systems. Please be mindful that this process can be damaging to your backflow prevention device. So, if you have any questions, you can contact our Water Department, and that phone number is 769-2210. So, we're just advising to be careful. As winter approaches, we need to get through the fall season. Our poll question on the city's poll question site is, do you take advantage of the free city leaf pickup? Each month, we bring forward a question, and this is the one on the poll. Thank you, Councilmember Miller, for your assistance in that program. And like always, if you have any questions or concerns, you can reach us 24/7 at the mayor's hotline, 769-2220, extension 503.
That's been used a lot, Troy.
You're welcome, sir.
Yeah.
And it has been used here recently, I'm told.
Yes.
Mayor and council, it gives me a great opportunity to share what the future holds for this new fiscal year. You're into your second meeting in October for the new fiscal year. In your financial plan, we have talked about this, it's the Public Safety General Obligation Bond. Your chiefs and the departments and the union are working hard on what to put into a list of needs that you'll get to take a look at here very shortly. There's been many hours put into coming in at less than what the city asked for just about 10 years ago. We are proposing to come forward with a bond for public safety for less than $7 million. 10 years ago, it was $7 million. We shared with our constituents that we would only buy equipment that would last 10 years. We shared with our constituents that we would make this work. We have now gone nearly 10 years, and we will be coming forward with other pieces of equipment that we need to have. These are very, very essential for public safety. They include ladder trucks. A ladder truck is approaching $1.5 million. Our constituents have helped us greatly through these economic times because we were not buying this capital. I propose to you that it's a great time to be out in the market. I don't see any major changes happening, so borrowing money with a city that has a very good credit rating will be very good for our constituents as well. So, in the world of giving you information, this is the first step that will be followed up with a detailed program of what we're looking at. So, we are proposing to come in less than where we were 10 years ago. The valuation of the city has gone in a positive direction, and if a person's property has not significantly increased in value, they will not pay more than they did previously. We still have the library portion of the general obligation bond out there. That's a fixed rate of interest. We went longer on that portion, which was $3 million, because this building will last much longer than 10 years. So, that's a quick little preview, saying we're doing everything we can to come in much less than $7 million, but we guarantee you today it will be less than $7 million. So, we just wanted to give you that update as we bring this forward in the month of November. Any questions you may have? Otherwise, I will sit down.
Troy, just, just in approximates, the interest rates obviously in 2005, 2005 were much higher than they are today. Do you have an idea of just approximate what we paid in 2005 versus what we'd be looking at in 2015?
We'll be down a little bit, but '05 was not a bad time to be out in the market. It was not, was not a negative on the interest rate. It was a good time. We also have a good credit rating, Mr. Mayor, as you would understand that particular process. So, we'll probably be, probably three-quarters of a point less, which is always the right way to go. So, all good news, as I look at it, coming forward.
Any questions for Troy? Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to general services, approval of use of citizens to participate on the police department's use of force review board, and a staff report by Chief White.
That is not the right slide. Good evening, mayor and council. Over the past several weeks, we've taught publicly about the need to have representation from our community on our use of force review board, and my purpose for being before tonight is to seek approval to make this program a reality. Our current policy provides for representatives from operations and support divisions, training component, a lieutenant from within the police department, and only one outside representative from another law enforcement agency. The scope of this board currently is limited to deadly force incidents only, and the board only meets when necessary, which over the past several years has been relatively infrequently until the, of course, the past year or so. The reason we are suggesting that we make these changes are really for a couple of reasons. The big one for us is accountability. The second one is increased community input, and then lastly transparency and openness with the community. And we hope by doing all these things, we increase trust within the police department, within our community. Got something in my eyeball. The changes to the board in terms of its composition and its scope would provide the following: the addition of two members of the community to serve on the board on a rotating basis. We would ask that the members who are serving on the board be members of the city of Coeur d'Alene. The members who are participating in the board will be asked to go through some training in terms of the current police department policy, some statute and case law and police procedure. And the scope of the board will change to include any use of force that results in significant injury. And I see the board acting in more of a standing fashion rather than being stood up only when absolutely necessary. So, and that's fully the Reader's Digest version of what we're hoping to do, and I'm hoping to get your authorization to allow community members to participate in the police department's use of force review board.
Questions for Chief White. Woody?
Chief, sounds like a great idea. How, how do you find somebody like that that wants to do that?
Well, we're gonna ask the community members at large, whoever would like to become a member of the board. All they need to do is message us with their information, and we will reach out and contact them. They can do that through a number of different ways. They can do it through our Facebook accounts. They can call the numbers that we have on our website. We also hope to do it through a number of meetings that, I mean, I go to meetings on a pretty regular basis with business leaders and things of that nature, and I hope to get the word out that way, just to kind of spread the word that we're looking for, we're looking for community input. And largely, I will tell you that what my hope is, that we don't have people that are, that just want to criticize the police, but that actually wants to work with us and help us understand what we can do better as an agency. Now, the whole purpose behind the training component that I spoke about before was, look, I think everyone is, is an expert in police use of force because we've all seen movies and seen TV shows and things of that nature. And over the past several weeks, I've received a couple of comments from people asking, you know, why do we need to go through this training when we really have a good understanding of what police officers do anyway? And I think it's important that they understand our policies. It's, it's important that members of the board understand case law, and I guess the best way I can put it is this, I'm probably dating myself a little bit, but I've always been a fan of the TV show MASH, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't presume to comment on the effectiveness of their operating skills. I've seen so many TV shows, and my wife's an ER nurse, and you have the person who's injured, and they come and they got a flat line, and someone comes screaming with paddles and shock them clear, and any, my E-Mus guys in the back of the room will tell you that that's not the proper procedure. So, really what we're hoping to do is train folks so they know what the training and, and policy and procedure information that officers receive. We want them to get some information on case law. And then, once that's done, they have a baseline knowledge, and I want to get their input as, from just a citizenry to see whether or not they thought the use of force was appropriate, what changes they would suggest, if there's policy issues that need to be addressed. Once again, training issues that need to be addressed, things of that nature.
Thanks, chief.
Other questions? Thank you, Chief White.
Mr. Mayor, I move that to authorize the use of citizens to participate on the police department use of force
Second.
Review board.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? No discussion seen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Now, move on to Public Works. Jim Markley, naming the new water well at Hanley and Atlas.
Thank you, Mayor Widmire. I'm pretty excited to be here tonight, and I will tell you why presently. Two items that I'm hoping to accomplish tonight, talking about the new well. First one is to do an update on the project, coming right along, and to talk about naming it. So, let me get right into it. This has been a really long project. I won't read all that stuff, but it has taken us over six years to get to this point, and we're maybe a month out from making water with that well, so that's, that's pretty good. It's been a long process. The location of the new well is right near, here we are, right near the intersection of Hanley Avenue and Atlas Road, and by past practice, we name our new wells based on location. In this case, however, we have, already have a Hanley well, and we already have an Atlas well. So, I went to the water department employees and said, we need to come up with a different name. What would you like to do? And we did a little process, and the overwhelming suggestion was to name it after my predecessor, Ralph Capol. Ralph is in the audience here. And I think that's a great idea. I fully endorse that, so that's part of why I'm here, is to ask for that. And at the risk of embarrassing Ralph, I'd like to go through a little bio, biography. Ralph started with Idaho Water in the early 50s, came in an entry-level position, worked his way through that organization until he reached the position of superintendent of the Coeur d'Alene area, and that's the position he retired from in 1993, so that's about 40 years. Ralph always showed a lot of foresight and vision. I've got a couple of examples of that. Originally, the water system was all surface water, and during Ralph's tenure, it went from totally surface to 100% groundwater. And there's huge implications in term of, terms of our water quality and treatment. That's a huge bonus for us. Also went from zero metering to 100% metering, so all the surfaces are metered. That has a lot of benefits. One of the best examples of vision, back in the early, I think, 80s, might have been late 70s, we were still using surface water part of our supply, and Ralph went to the Department of Water Resources and got a letter from them saying this is demonstrating what our use was, and some of the history of it. And so, that was something nobody did at that time. It didn't need to, no big deal, no problem. Well, in the adjudication process, we went back to Department of Water Resources to secure that surface rate, and Exhibit 1 was that letter that Ralph got many, many years ago. I don't think anyone else has a letter like that, but we do. In the process, it just sailed through. It was, it was very simple, and I think that letter has made the difference. That's the kind of vision that, that Ralph has always shown. He's also our, our historical resource. We'll come across something in the ground that we can't figure out, and we'll call Ralph. And Ralph will say, oh yeah, I remember that one. We ran across the street because there was something here, and we did that. And he's a great resource for us. We use him a lot. So, for those and other reasons, that's why we're enthusiastic about requesting. My request is that you endorse us naming the new well, the Ralph Capol well. With that, let me move on to the project, the well itself. Just got a few pictures here. This is a 6-inch test well being pumped. We always do a small well first. It's a lot cheaper, and we can verify that we've got the water quantity and water quality before we spend a lot of money doing a production well. This one proved out, and so we moved on to the 24-inch well, which is the production well. There's the casing going down into the ground. And then we test pumped it. Yes, we did. Yep, that's us not test pumping it. One. Technical. All right. Don't make me wing this. All right, I got an idea. Right, no mouse. Okay, let's just wing it.
Mouselessness.
But I do really want to show you my last slide. So, we, we did the production well.
Yell if that comes back.
We did the production well, and then we test pumped it, and we pumped at 4,200 gallons a minute, which is a lot of water. And I misspoke last Monday at Public Works. It was a foot and a half drawdown.
Wow.
Which is like unbelievable for that, that quantity of water. That's, it's an amazing, amazing source. So, it's got a lot of water in it. The quality's really good. When we did that test pumping last November, we invited Department of Environmental Quality folks to come out from the drinking water program, and they all came out and watched that test pumping. You won't see much, much more water at one time than, than doing that. Since that approved out, we moved on to, let's get one more shot. We moved on to building the, the wellhouse, which has been coming right along, and
Technical help.
All right.
Did she lock up on you?
Yeah.
She did.
Look at you. The cavalry. Okay, I got it. Thanks a lot. Back on track. So, there's the DEQ folks. It was kind of a cold day, so they looked like it, as it was. We, we moved in and building the building. There's the building going up. There's a couple shots of the inside. Those are recent pictures. And as of last Friday, the motor control center came, and it is a big thing. There's three, three pieces like that. There's two of them there. There's another one outside the picture. That is the brains of the well, and that's what does everything. That's the biggest part of the well. It's the most expensive. It's the hardest to get. It's like 12 weeks to get them built and shipped. So, we've got a couple of things left to do. Need to name it here tonight for that. We have the usual odds and ends. We have the usual odds and ends miscellaneous things. We'll get the motor control center up and running. Then we do start-up and troubleshooting and these are very complicated and there's always some tweaking that has to happen, but we'll get that done. And then we move into the fun part, which is the ribbon cutting. So with that, towards the end of November, we'll do the ribbon cutting. And.
Cool.
And I, the request is that the council endorse us naming it the Ralph Capol Well. And with that, I would love to take any questions you might have.
Ron.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Council. Back in the middle, as Jim mentioned, that Ralph worked for the city's quite a number of years, back in the middle of seventies, the city of Coeur d'Alene acquired the Idaho Water Company and it was, there was a great concern at that time that when the city acquired the Idaho Water Company, if the employees and especially Ralph would stay with the city. And so the city had a meeting with the employees and Mr. Capol. And all the employees at that time stayed with the city except one. And quite a few of those employees retired from the city of Coeur d'Alene. And like I say, it was a great concern that if Ralph would stay with the city, which Ralph did, he stayed with the city and I think as Jim mentioned, that he stayed with the city and retired in nineteen ninety-three. And it's been my, my pleasure to, been able to work with Ralph all those years and basically the whole Capol family and Ralph was one of the ones that instead of being a fireman, he provided the water for the rest of the family. So, Mr. Mayor, I would like to move at this time that the, to authorize the use, to approve the naming of the new well located at Hanley and Atlas as the Ralph Capol Well.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to make a quick comment. I know Mr. Markley wasn't thrilled about coming and being behind the podium, so that little snafu had to really put the pressure on you, but you did a great job. And I think it's really something to me that feels, when you have a guy who dedicated that much of his life to the city, then retires and dedicates another twenty years to still answering your questions, it's a well-deserved honor. And, and I was remiss in not thanking Chief prior to, during your presentation along the same lines, that this outreach in making a great community is reaching out to the citizens who make it great and recognizing great citizens like Ralph Capol. So I, I really appreciate that you came and did this and I think it's a great opportunity to, to share that recognition.
Wood.
I have to ask Ralph about wooden pipes. Ralph, did you put wooden pipes in the ground? You did. Well, we're pulling them out now and we're seeing them all over and I love the, the scenario of it's well deserved. You get it well deserved.
Thanks.
I caught that from you, yeah.
I stumbled.
Any other discussion from the council? Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry.
Hooah!
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, so moving on to other business, we have ZC-three-dash-fourteen request by Ray Harding of one point seven-five acre parcel between Fruitland Lane and Howard Street.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of findings of ZC-three-dash-one-four, change to R-seven, to R-seventeen residential at seventeen units per acre.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carry. Then we have Council Bill fourteen-dash-one-zero-two-zero zoning designation ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass the reading of Council Bill fourteen-ten-twenty.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Renata, could you read the title, please?
Sure. Council Bill fourteen-dash-one-zero-two-zero, an ordinance amending the zoning act of the city of Coeur d'Alene, Cootney County, Idaho, known as Ordinance Number sixteen ninety-one, ordinances of the city of Coeur d'Alene, by changing the following described property from R-twelve residential at twelve units per acre to R-seventeen residential at seventeen units per acre and providing certain conditions upon the property. Said property being described as followed, to wit, plus or minus one point seven-five acre parcel between Fruitland Lane and Howard Street, south of Claddy Lane. Track fifty-four of Fruitland's addition to Coeur d'Alene, repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing a severability clause. Provide for the publication of a summary of this ordinance and effective date hereof.
Roll call.
Ettinger?
No.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Move suspend rules?
Second.
Motion and a second to suspend the rules. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ettinger?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Looking for a motion to enter into executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we enter into executive session as provided by Idaho Code sixty-seven dash two-three-four-five subsection C, to conduct deliberations concerning labor negotiations or to acquire an interest in real property which is not presently owned by a public agency.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Renata.
Evans?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Enter into executive session.[1772.95]